Yeah, you're here.
They have a different ticket.
I got tickets for the meeting.
You see each other?
Yes.
Reports on top?
That you weren't here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here for the first time.
Trustee reports? Yeah.
How are you doing?
Okay.
As well as one can be. At our meeting.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. It is 7:01, and I hereby call to order the February 2023 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to thank the Deputy Clerk, Lord Yelton Tyler, for joining us tonight and keeping minutes. A few upcoming dates in the village. The village office will be closed on Monday, the 20th, for President's Day. And there's been a lot of Monday holidays in the last few months. If you need your garbage tags, get them before Monday, because we won't be here Monday. We also have, I want to remind everyone that on March 1st, at 6:30 PM right here, we're going to have a second public forum on the sewer project. This will cover all the content from the first forum, for those of you who weren't here, as well as proceed into discussions of the collection system, which we did not get into at the first forum. March 1st, 6:30 PM. Trustees, we have two sets of minutes in your binders. We have January 18th regular board meeting, and we have the February 8th workshop and public hearing minutes from last week. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this man, Jerry, called by Schilling. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think I just handed away my treasurer's report. Did I give that? Did I carry that over there? Yes. Okay, I'll read from the treasurer's report. I want to thank Treasurer Day for her work. This month in the general fund, we spent $59,621.89, and that is also our grand total, $59,621.89. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Ms. Baldino, is there a second?
Second.
Major, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Manjiri, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to a zoning report. Trustee Schilling, please.
Yes. This passed, all right, this is for February 15th. Building permits reviewed, four. Building permits issued, four. Complaints, zero. Complaints investigated, zero. Zoning property maintenance violations, zero. Appearance tickets, zero. Municipal searches, one. Inspections, eight. Co-enforcement training provided by Z3. Fire inspections. That's the report.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Schilling. Before we open the floor for public comment on our agenda, I hope everyone was able to pick it up at the back of the room and on your way in. We are adding an action, we're going to have a forest agenda item, which is, I'll read from it here, a resolution authorizing solicitation of public bids for Broadway sidewalks, Phase 4. So that was added after this agenda was created. So with that, we have the Sewer Project Bond Supplement, Sewer Debt Limit Exclusion, the ARPA funds designation, and that solicitation of bids for sidewalks.
And Mr. Mayor, there's a copy of the Resolutions for the Forest Agenda items over on the table there.
Great, thank you. Any public comment on agenda items only, and of course, we have general public comment at the end of our meeting. Okay, we're going to jump in, but you can always give the public the last ups.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustees, resolution for the Sewer Project Bond Supplement. We reviewed this in the last hour. People who came on the, let's see, January 24th, learned about the tremendous increase in the sewer project. We had once issued a bond which authorizes the amount of borrowing we can do to that project. That amount from several years ago was $7,011,900. The new project cost is expected to be $13,442,228. So this bond increases our borrowing from that $7 million figure to that $13 million figure by, we would authorize an increase to the bond of $6,433,28. Is there a motion to authorize the bond supplement for the sewer project in the amount I just mentioned?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Baldino. Any further discussion on this? So great.
It is. It's, um, it's a lot.
We're under consent order.
Yeah. I mean, it's, there isn't a choice, so, yeah, we just need to find the money.
We're going to find the money. Okay, with that, roll call vote, please. Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Manjiri?
Aye.
Trustee Schilling?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay, next in your binders, we have the Sewer Debt Limit Exclusion. And I'll briefly explain that villages are told by the state how much debt you can have. It's based on a five-year average of your, Christine, you'll have to help me here.
So your full valuation?
Full valuation.
Your average of the full valuation, 7% of that.
7% of that. So for Tivoli, that means we're never allowed to have more than about $8 million and change borrowing out there. And so obviously, we have to get up to $13 million. We did borrow for the water project from the EFC at zero interest, but water projects are exempt automatically from that general borrowing cap of 8 point something. Sewer projects can be exempt if you apply for it. So we're going to apply for it. So this resolution is to authorize submission of an application for exclusion of certain sewer indebtedness. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schilling. Any further discussion?
So this just, this means like, the $8 million, that's the limit, and that would be for, you know, like when we did the elevator, right? If that had cost $8 million, right? But because it's water and hopefully sewer, right? And we can't live without those things.
There's the opportunity to get exempted from your rate of debt, so. Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Manjiri?
Aye.
Trustee Schilling?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Resolution is adopted. Moving on to our ARPA funds. So this is the American Rescue Plan Act. This is, you know, came out of Washington in response to the pandemic and its economic impacts on communities across our country. Tivoli's share of that giant pie is $110,000, which is a lot of money around here. The board is having good discussions about how to spend that. We've raised some ideas from the public. We haven't decided that exactly yet, but there is a filing requirement. By April, the village has to elect which category. We're given several categories to say these funds are going to fall under X. So tonight, we're going to do a motion to authorize the election of revenue of the Revenue Replacement category for the ARPA funds received by the Village of Tivoli, which total $110,000. I'll ask for a motion in just a second. That lets us do the next, you know, little deadline with the federal government, and we will continue to discuss what we're actually going to spend it on around here. So with that, motion to authorize election of Revenue Replacement category for the ARPA funds.
So moved.
Okay, that was Manjiri, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, as I said, we have a resolution authorizing solicitation of public bids for the Broadway sidewalks, Phase 4 project. Again, this is the sidewalk that goes basically from the former St. Sylvia's, now Plain Hall, up towards Kotsbon and Woods Road. All that broken blue stone is going to be replaced this spring with a concrete sidewalk, five feet wide, fully ADA compliant. Is there, excuse me, and the resolution is pending on county approval, because the county is still looking over our bid specs, and so, I want to not forget that. Is there a motion to authorize solicitation of public bids for the Broadway sidewalks? Project pending county approval. Ms. Trustee Baldino, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Manjiri? Any further discussion? We are trying very hard to get this all constructed and finished by June 1st. That's sort of my goal, so we can enjoy them all summer. And hopefully, it's also going to be timed to link nicely with the reopening of the Tivoli and Kotsbon Trail, which is coming this spring. So with that, Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Manjiri?
Aye.
Trustee Schilling?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you, trustees, for that. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, the Ides of March, March 15th. Beware of them. At 6:00 PM is the workshop, and then 7:00 PM is the board meeting here at the Historic Lots of Paster Hall. I've been trying to train myself to save the paster. It's really hard.
It's tough.
And our regular workshop will be on March 8th, and I want to remind everyone that that new time is going to be 6:00 PM. We've been doing 7:00 PM for a number of years, so those second Wednesday workshops will be 6:00 PM. And we are also going to have two public hearings that night that were set last week. At 6 o'clock, we have a public hearing on the new building and zoning law. And at 6:10, we have a public hearing on reducing speed limits village-wide to 30 miles an hour. Woo! 25 miles an hour from 30. Thank you. Went too fast on me. Moving on to committee reports. Trustee Schilling has the, let's see. You have your village court? Police report.
Okay. I got the total money collected and permitted to state comptroller fines. $1,510, surcharges $612, total $2,122.
Thank you, Trustee Schilling. Anything else going on you'd like to report about?
I did sit down with previous trustee Susan, and we went over some of her committees and some of the work that she's been working on with the garbage collection and waterfront rehabilitation. And so I spent a good couple hours with Susan going over, she had a lot of great information, so.
Yeah. Yeah. She, uh, yeah. Miss, or?
Just stepping into some big, tiny shoes.
Yeah, big, tiny shoes. All right, thank you, Trustee Schilling. Trustee Baldino has the police report.
I have the Justice Court report.
Well, he just read that.
I didn't, you read that.
Sorry, that's what I was saying. There you go.
So I can read the police report. So this month, we had 14 incidents, two uniform traffic tickets, three parking tickets, and zero arrests. But I will note, I was looking at the Justice Report, and speeding, so we were lowering to 25. There have been people that are going above 50 and 30, so that's pretty fast.
Yep, we've got 55 and a 30, 52 and a 30. Those are $100 tickets.
65 and a 45.
So, yes. 65 on IG.
Yep.
Plus cell phone tickets, too.
Yeah.
Or no, does the main traffic device is a stop sign?
That's a stop sign.
Oh.
So, you know, Red FPD's been with us here in the village since September, and they're doing a lot of enforcement on these things. It's sort of troubling to not see the numbers go down in the last several months. They're still finding plenty of people blowing through stop signs and speeding down our village streets. So hopefully, in time, people will adjust to this enforcement. And of course, it'd be great if everyone just did the right thing, we didn't need any enforcement at all. All right, thank you, Trustee Baldino. Trustee Manjiri? Want to tell us about anything? Any thoughts of spring?
Yes, thoughts of spring, looking forward to Duck and his appearance.
We have a name for the duck, right?
I almost thought like a Huey.
I think that's his name.
And who was that purchased at for us? The engineers or the?
MADA Construction.
Okay.
So they were the ones who did our $100,000 community development block grant project in the park. And we had had a, you know, piece of playground equipment as an alternate. And, you know, the way the costs came in, the village board decided, well, we can't afford that alternate. And then MADA said, we'll just get you a duck. So it's a donation from this, you know, contractor that we've worked with, and greatly, greatly appreciated. And then I think it took about 10 months to get Huey to Tivoli because of supply chains and this and that. And, yeah, it was an awful lot of like, hey, you gave us a free duck, where is it?
The very duck shortage of 2029.
Duck shortage. Yeah. And I know the DPW's pulled Huey out of the box, and it should be getting installed very soon at the park. And this is a little spring, spring duck for the little ones.
Just in time for the egg hunt to be at the park this year. The date is to be announced, but it's happening this year in the park.
Okay, and it'll be before Easter?
Yes, before Easter. And the fire department is going to do their help with me, and they did a really nice job last year.
Absolutely.
They like, really were like, very well organized.
Yeah.
And actually, it was great.
All right, so keep your eyes out for more information about the Tivoli Children's Egg Hunt. This is here, it's going to be over in Memorial Park. Deputy Mayor, Major, please.
Well, I would like to direct everyone to tivolylibrary.org, where you can see all the excellent things that are going on in our library. For example, we have hooks and needles, yarns and thread, which is the weekly fiber arts crafting group. And I was actually speaking to one of the members this morning who referred to the group as a bunch of old hookers. So there is no Adrian Fire for this, so come on by. There's also Story Hour, and yoga, and book club, and there's a tarot group, and there's mahjong. And then an event that I think sounds fascinating, on Friday, the 24th, in the afternoon, there's a workshop on Q-tip pointillism. So.
That's cool.
Yeah. I think this sounds awesome. So.
I'm getting into it.
Yep. At Historic Red Hook on the 22nd, at 7:00 PM, it's actually on Zoom, but it's an author talk, which is called, the book is called Aristocratic Educations and the Making of the American Republic. And this is, it looks like a fascinating book, because it's about how in the decades after the Revolutionary War, it was really important to get the populace up to speed, right? Because if you don't have an educated populace, democracy doesn't work, right? But there was no public education. So this book is about the creation of public schools in New York State in the decades after the revolution. And if you go over to Clermont on, you know, on Route 9, you'll see what I believe was the first public school in the state. So right there in the hamlet of Clermont. In terms of our natural world, you may have noticed that there probably will be no sledding this year at, you know, the favorite spots like Clermont or Montgomery Place. But Clermont, Montgomery Place, and Tivoli Bays are a lovely place to be walking right now in shirt sleeves. But because of that, the mud is deep, and the ticks are ravenous. So be aware, be careful, and just wear something with good treads, because it really is slippery. And I want to tell you about some Tivoli history that I saw, Tivoli-related history that I saw up in Saratoga this weekend. I'd gone up to look at a job, and at the Saratoga Battlefield site, it's a national battlefield monument, there's a monument that was commissioned by our own General DePyster, which is in the shape of a leg. It's a bronze leg, and it's meant to honor Benedict Arnold, specifically his leg. Because Benedict Arnold was basically the hero of Saratoga, which was a really important battle of the Revolutionary War. And he was wounded in the leg quite badly. And after that battle, he felt quite aggrieved, because he felt he didn't get his due in terms of like compensation and respect and like promotions and whatnot, which arguably led to his ultimate, you know, betrayal of the country. But 100 years after the Civil War, Armand DePyster, who was like the king of armchair quarterbacks regarding, you know, Revolutionary and Civil War battles, commissioned this monument, because he said that that leg was the only honorable thing about Benedict Arnold. So if you happen to be up near Saratoga, and you want to see yet another example of our, I don't know, village patrons, just sort of quirky beneficence, beneficence.
This guy's like a monument of Montauk.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah, he's got a lot of monuments, but this one really, I think, takes the cake.
Is it life-size?
Yeah, it's a life-size, it's actually bigger than life-size. It's a big, big leg.
It's like the Christmas story.
The Christmas story?
With the lamp.
Yeah, exactly. It's like the leg lamp.
It stops like just above the knee.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Look it up.
And nobody wanted to get rid of the leg because Benedict Arnold was a traitor?
No, because he was such a, you know, he was so important in that remarkably important battle. Right? Because it was during the Battle of Saratoga that the British were futzing about in the river here, waiting to get the word to go on up and join Burgoyne. And so they entertained themselves by burning Kingston and burning Clermont, and, you know, and the word never came because of Benedict Arnold and, you know, lots of other people. But.
So like, he had a leg up on things.
Oh! Mic drop.
All right, let's see. So, yes, I want to remind everyone again, the village is able to reduce the speed limits from 30 to 25. That's because New York State changed the law, which previously had restricted us to 30 mile an hour. We were not allowed to go lower. We're having our public hearing on March 8th for that. You know, right up there with late-night noise, speeding has probably been the most prevalent and persistent complaint I have received in all my years on the board. So I hope that people who have complained will come and support this legislation, because it can only help when we see, you know, I tell this to people, they say, oh, they're still going to go so fast. Well, hopefully, instead of going 36 and a 30, they'll go 31 and a 25. I don't know. But it's, you know, we're doing what we can do legally between police enforcement, between our speed sign, between lowering the speed limits. So I hope that people are as enthused about this action as I am. While we're on the streets of Tivoli, I want to remind everyone that the winter parking ordinance is still in effect. Mind-blowing is the temperatures have been, but, you know, we're all at that point where we're starting to worry about blizzards in March and April, which we have seen. And if one of those things occurs, and DPW needs to plow our streets, and there's cars in their way, it really, really makes it difficult and even unsafe, both for the safety of your car, which may be among the snow plowing, and also for our DPW workers who have to be strategic on our little streets with their big plows. So remember, can't park overnight on streets anywhere. I feel like the whole village has gotten lax. There can be tickets written. And if you don't have off-street parking at your home, you can get a $25 permit from the village clerk's office to use any of the several municipal lots. So thank you for cooperating with the winter parking ordinance, which doesn't end until April Fool's Day, April 1st. Another thing that's come up many times is people say, hey, I've got a Central Hudson street light that's out in front of my home. What do I do? Call me or email me the pole number. There's like a six-digit number on your pole, and those, sometimes I've had more success than, say, your average resident. I have a good contact at Central Hudson. I say, you know, dear Brian, here's three pole numbers. People are concerned about the light on the street. So we have recourse, so let me know.
Do you have any poll with the bills?
The bills, no. I asked, no, although our congressional representative, I don't know if you follow.
Sure.
Yeah, on the floor of the US House, he called out the president of Central Hudson by name, told him that, sure, he said, sir, you should resign. So, yeah. And again, March 1st, sewer forum, March 8th, two public hearings. And I forgot to mention this earlier in the evening, but on March 21st is the annual village election. The offices of mayor and two seats on the village board are up for election. And that will be Tuesday, the 21st, from noon to 9:00 PM, polling at the firehouse. And with that, trustees, if you don't have anything else, we'll open the floor to public comment. Good evening, public. How are you?
Hi.
Danielle?
I wonder why maybe you don't raise the fine for the speeding to something ridiculous like $500, so people would be afraid to get that.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how the fines work, and of course, you know, it's really an issue for the court to decide. I mean, I think our laws gives them guidelines for fines.
The rules are vehicle and traffic laws.
Vehicle and traffic law.
State vehicle and traffic laws, right.
Yeah, so the state sets those penalties. And I know that, you know, you get in court, and you talk with the officer, and you talk with the judge, and sometimes it's parking on pavement, but, yeah, I mean, how do you get people to do the right thing? But, yeah, apparently, we don't, we're not able to set the actual penalty for that. Yes, Kathy O'Connor?
There is a law in New York State that Tivolians or people visiting Tivoli violate left and right. It is only a misdemeanor. The law that I'm referring to is that it is a misdemeanor to walk with the traffic at your back. And that's how we lost those two bar students, you know, several years back. So I would like signs on telephone poles.
You're walking the wrong way.
No, you know, if you can see this sign, you're walking with the law. Or, you know, dizzle about the wording, but get the word out that you're not only violating the law, but you're risking your life.
Right, and the rule is you walk against the traffic.
Against the traffic. But ride with it.
And you ride your bike with traffic.
Yep. Did I say it?
No, you said it for a second. I'm just restating it. Yeah.
No, it's really bad to put the responsibility on the driver, right? Like, and especially when you see people who are walking with traffic, with headphones and whatnot, and it's like, oh, man, you were just asking for it.
And if we could spread the word with law enforcement, you know, we can increase our revenue.
Yeah. It's always good to remind people of that rule. Yeah.
I think lowering the speed limit is, it is going to be good, though.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you can go that under, if it's 25, well, 30 now, and people can push it up to like 40. You know what I mean? But if it's 25, then maybe they would only go 35, but.
Because everyone's going to go 25 now.
But the higher you go, the fines increase. Like Danielle would say, if you're 0 to 15, it's X amount. But that five miles could make or break, especially in some of these ones.
Points on your license.
If it was 25 miles in those two that are going 50, that's immediately like revocation of your license if you're 30 miles over the speed limit. And you get points, and insurance companies only, so it would behoove you to do 25.
What is the status of the Waterfront Park?
The status of the Waterfront Park is that we obviously completed that shoreline stabilization two summers ago, which makes it less urgent, because we're no longer eroding our property. There's no pressing action at this time. Partly that is due to other village priorities right now, like sewer plants and firehouses. But partly, it's because of Amtrak's plan over the last several years to do gating and fencing in a number of areas between Statsburg and north up towards Hudson. And the many municipalities have been communicating with Central Hudson about this, with the incredible help of scenic Hudson. And I put this in a pithy way. Right now, I think it's strategic to sort of slow down a little bit and see how some of these gating and fencing conversations go, because it's possible that there could be other means of safe public access across the tracks than the overpass that was one time. the overpass that was one time considered as like the way it has to go. And some of those conversations that scenic Hudson is having with Amtrak right now have to do with preserving and promoting safe public access. And we may become the poster child for some kind of trial, or, you know, let's see how it goes at Tivoli Place. So, and it's not been something we're working on at all right now. And again, once we got the shoreline stabilized, it's like, okay, we can be a little more patient and strategic about what goes on here. It's certainly still the aspiration of the village, or at least I'll speak for myself, to see that park down there for sure, so.
So we're in a good place by way, right? Like, we're not losing any more of that land to the river because of the stabilization. And as long as, you know, like the technology is evolving, the conversation is evolving that could keep us from perhaps having to do something crazy to get access.
Right, or whether Amtrak could, you know, gate off down there by Friendship Street completely.
All last summer, it was ribbon off, and we weren't supposed to go.
Oh, I see, okay, I can explain that. So we don't have a waterfront park yet, right? So that, it has park-like attributes because it's flat and has nice new grass, but it's not open, it's not a park, it's not protected, don't go down there and have a picnic. We have signs up that say, keep out. And the reason we had to put up that tape and the stakes is because motorists kept driving through our new grass seed on our stabilization project. And so I instructed DPW to rope it off so that people would let the grass take and stop driving on it, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, it's, it's the Department of State who gets to approve or disprove, or disapprove Amtrak's final gating and fencing plan. So I strongly recommend anyone talking to scenic Hudson who cares about the river access, they've been just the most tremendous ally and advocate and leader all the way. And we stay in touch regularly, scenic Hudson and I. And of course, when Tivoli first acquired that property back in 2010, after 30 years of effort, it was scenic Hudson's donation that paid for the purchase. So they're as, you know, invested in, in what happens down there as we are. And so we follow it closely, and if there are any developments, the railroad came forward with a plan, all the communities got together and said, whoa, 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 slow down. The plan was pretty, you know, tall fences, ugly fences, closing places that had been accessed for a long time. And the public outcry organized by scenic Hudson, meetings up and down, all the communities got the ear of DOS, and the Amtrak withdrew their plan. And so now we're waiting to see what they come back with.
So that's the status, they hold the original plan they put out there and wait and see what else is to be said.
Yeah, and we'll see whether they, you know, try the same thing two years later, or if they, you know, adjust it. You know, I think, obviously, we want safety on the railroad tracks, which is their concern. But this is the Hudson River, that's why Tivoli and many of these communities are even here. And public access to the river is, you know, it's not something to give up on easily.
Well, there's also railroads all along the coast of California where there are just, you know, there are at-grade crossings for people, right? And there's gates and whatnot, so if, if something like that could be done, that'd be awesome.
Absolutely, yeah. So I know scenic Hudson has identified at-grade pedestrian crossings where there's actually high-speed rail, I mean, this isn't technically high-speed, even though they go 95, that are currently in use in other states that Amtrak puts their trains on, so.
Different technologies than just the owner and the lights and the sound.
Right, right, this is like the ones that the deputy mayor refers to, they're beaches, they've got a railroad track, and people go to the beach, and these things, they work like an airlock. There's a series of four gates, and if a train is a mile away, it all closes up and you just can't, you know, and then when the train goes by, it all opens up and you go through it.
Right.
And they're, you know, a fraction of the cost of an overpass. When these tracks are elevated with the sea level rise, which we know is going to happen, they can go up with the tracks as opposed to going up underneath the overpass.
Interesting, yeah. Sounds like a block almost.
They do a human lock.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're trying to be a little strategic about when we, when we take the next step in the park, right? Thank you for your question.
Speaking of river park investments, how will the ARPA funds be designated? How does that process happen? Is this just you guys' discussion or?
Yeah, I mean, people can give us suggestions. We had yours last week, but yeah, the board will discuss that and figure out when we have to make an answer. Some of the things we're discussing are investments in the park, obviously, the sewer project, the firehouse expansion, we've heard about the walkway, as your comment, so we're, we're discussing. And we may have the ability to sort of split it up and send it in a few directions, even though it's, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it's a lot of money for Tivoli, so. Yes, Kathy?
I didn't catch the name you referred to St. Sylvia as, but could you tell us the status of that building and what's projected for it?
I don't know a whole lot more than anyone else. There's a sign in front that says Plain Hall.
Plain Hall?
Plain.
Oh, plain, okay.
Yeah, it's very faintly written in like fine charcoal. It's an artistic sign, so it's hard to read from more than three feet away.
As far as I know, work is ongoing, so.
I think Bard Kids have studios in there now. Yeah, they're doing, yeah, Bard has some arrangement with the Bryces in Bard regarding the use of that right now, and I think there's, art students have studios in there.
Wow, that's news. So we know that they've done a lot of work, you know, renovating, repairing, you know, the inside of that building, particularly the basement was in really bad shape, so. And of course, they gave the village the parking lot for $1. You know, the original sort of understanding was it would be a community and cultural space, so, but it's a private thing, so I don't know any more about it really than, than anyone else. Any other public comment? Trustees, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? Okay, that was the deputy mayor, followed by trustee Baldino. It is 7:38, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.